So. I keep going. Does she have a fit?
Oh, not as much as the one that she had with you. You or you, I know. She was a little bit better then.
Oh, okay.
But I think I'm her best friend now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. She likes me. And she's very.
Yeah. But, um. Test didn't work today. Was it one of those things?
Hmm.
Yeah, he has issues sometimes. But I just. If it was somebody every day, I like.
Christine.
What's the gym facility use agreement?
Um. Went back and put something in on Friday.
Oh, I saw that. I've never seen that. Sunday basketball. Yeah.
So. We were gonna either. Hold it, but then when we got more stuff for an after twelve. Is that what it is?
Why are all these names marked off that are? It says, please put next by the names that are not attending.
Did I have something else?
Chris's name is checked off, Ben's name's checked off, but he's not checked off.
That was my form. I was over here.
He's getting ahead of himself.
I was getting ahead of himself.
No, it's fine. I'm just curious why it's checked off.
Yeah, I realized. I was like, oh, that's it, yeah.
Put it on your paper. Right, even separate, so you guys don't argue.
That's why they're only.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm forming. Mom's dad.
Okay.
Darren, I don't need it.
I think I gave Ben one already.
You what?
I gave Ben one already, so.
You have plans to get a, uh, camera on the back playground this summer? I had a kiddo punch another kid in the nose and I would maybe feel a little. Like, well, we gotta take their word for it, because the teacher out there didn't see it either.
One of the.
What are you doing on your Friday? Sorry.
She's out and John has a field trip.
Oh, okay, running the place.
Yes.
Uh, one of the uptick guys will be out tomorrow for test score.
Okay.
Showing where we're, there was supposed to be camera on the gym. There was no whole room. Decided to move somewhere else and still cover the playground.
Okay, so. Yes. We need that.
So what's your two things? Just the furniture? Is that your two things?
That and water main.
Oh, so those two, the furniture comes out of bond.
They all come out of bond.
The water main too? Yeah, nothing to worry about.
Everything I'm doing this summer is coming out of bond.
Not everything.
Like what?
I think we had a couple of small little projects that weren't coming out of there.
I need some water. Do not get me wrong, that's. Right, don't let me forget next one. We gotta do a resignation for Francis.
He plans for me back a couple times.
I can't forget. Jessica here tonight?
I haven't seen her yet.
I don't know if she really should miss on the day on senior trip. Uh, if I could say, um, she's out.
Oh, okay.
They probably won't be back until.
What was your best part of Washington DC trip?
I forgot who I did it, um, in DC. He. He's.
Oh, yeah?
But I really, I had not, I've only been to DC once since when I was eleven. I had, uh, Ellen Paulette. And he was like, ride my plane. I've had a twenty-three hour layover in DC. Oh, so we slept in the main, did like three days.
Oh, oh.
So that was the last I see of, um, in the years ago, so this was, I'd say a lot.
Oh, that's it.
We had a lot more memories probably. Up there.
Yeah, we was hoping Lily would go this year, but with sports and everything else she had going on, she didn't make the trip. Last year we was ready to go. This year, she didn't, she, since they combined them eight and ninth. She didn't get to go.
Jessica should just share a picture with Dana and I.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
There's a lot of kids there.
Do they still close it down for just the same age?
Um, I don't think that's on as long as, yeah. I can be wrong about this, especially maybe.
A little bit many years ago, they shut it down at multiple schools, but it was all.
Oh, it's nice. Amy, how are you? Like in your new position?
Uh.
Yeah?
Yep, thanks to Krim, Lincoln. I, I remember I saw for you one time and that was my thought when I was sitting there that day.
I want this job.
And there was some other jobs that opened up, just going like, what?
But we like for him being here.
Well, that's it. Yeah, my class.
Good. Wow, it's right.
He does a very good job.
I'm gonna just hook up my laptop.
Hi, friends.
Leave it in here. We don't have one.
What?
Do a name.
Get the same ugly face the whole life.
Just gotta see you for a while.
No look to change other than less.
Mike, Mike, can you pretend she's gonna take notes?
What's this? What year did we start school together? Tenth grade?
Yeah, yeah, been a while.
Oh.
She knows all my stories. Sleep over here.
Oh, yeah.
Are we good?
Yep.
Well, the meeting has ordered. We'll get started with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, welcome everyone. Uh, tonight Mr. Short is here. We're gonna talk about the high school at Morristown.
Um, so I wanna talk about our, uh, recent split to DC. Uh, we had. Uh, overall, I think it was a great success. Uh, I don't know all those numbers, but they were pretty close to ours. Morrison had twenty-nine kids and we had less go. Uh, we had thirty sign up and then one of them had a birthday. Um, got our itinerary there. It was packed. When we did the flight memory memorial on the way out, uh, I got to Gettysburg. And then Mount Vernon, then did a bunch of monuments in the evening, uh, that second day. Um, then day three, we got to tour the Capitol building and then we went to Arlington Cemetery and we saw more memorials and monuments. And then day four, we went to Forest Theater and, um, Peter's son, Peter Striebel, had passed away. Um, and then, uh, we had options for museums, whichever facilities we wanna go to. And we went to Alexandria, uh, for dinner and then day five was traffic. But it was actually packed. Um, the, I think day three, I clocked twenty-eight thousand steps, something like that. It was a lot, a lot of walking. Um, but it was really, really good. Um, Walden had a, um, guy in DC and we had another guy, I think they're actually married, if I understood that situation right. Um, but ours, I think we came by the chest joy, um, Chester Joy, and he, uh, he was fantastic. He, um, he talked a lot about, and he's memorial or monument where we talked about the, um, history of the person of the whole problem. And then he talked a lot about the artistic choices that were made and why the line was set the way it was and kind of all the stuff kind of going into that. And then he would almost always tie it back into, um, the importance of service or leadership or improving your community or country. Uh, so it was just really good times. Um, we had kids really, uh, paying attention through a hitch up, even after one. So that was pretty, pretty impressive. Um, a couple, uh, pictures for you here. Stuff from the White House, I think I forgot to mention we did that right before the Capitol. And then we, uh, discuss it's, uh, in front of Lincoln Memorial, looking at the Washington monuments. And then discuss, uh, list us the Capitol move, um, some Morrison pictures, um. We, I think we made the memorial a couple years ago, this trip happened. And then last year we were trying to get it done, um, but we just had enough interest in our eighth grade last year to get a big enough group scanner so Mark could pull it off. Um, and then this year we ended up picking the ninth graders, uh, to try and capture any ninth graders who didn't get a chance to go. Um, this one was so successful, we, we originally said, let's just stick with every other year. But after, like, while we were on this trip, Mark, I started saying, well, maybe we should try it again next year. See if we can get the numbers, uh, to a plus or a minus. Do it again, that re, recheck it back. So it was really, um, pretty impactful for a lot of kids, so. Pretty happy. Our kids were well behaved, um, didn't have any problems.
The parents behaved too.
Parents also behaved.
Okay, that's good. What about? She behaved? Okay, just make sure. All right. All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I know. That day three, I think it was day like two and three.
Big day.
Go to step off the bus. I was like.
I think it's healing for the play.
All right, we're gonna congratulate the students of the month. We start at Morristown. We have Zoe Atwood, Noah Klaus, Sammy DeWitt, and Tate Ross in elementary. In the high school at Morristown, we have Adeline Boring, Donald Coon, Olivia Rude, and Brayden Keithley.
For Walden Elementary, Cole Walden, Preston Williams, Brian Strill, Elizabeth Carter, and then Alice, Charlie Bash, Aurora Brayden's, Elena Ned, Briar Barn, Cooper Moore, Carson Brownlee, Jesse Sapp, Brooklyn Yarley, Alan Bruckers, Jordan Chum, for Walden High School, Natalia Sweets, Ben Hayden, Abby Ugo, Eli Stewart.
Andrew's gonna read the correct list, because I have April's list, so he's gonna read the May students of the month.
For May? For Morristown Elementary, quietly. Tommy.
Great, thanks a lot. Ari Roller, Bryson Kate, Benton Smith, Ricky Durbin, Samuel Western, Martin Thompson, Maddie Carlton.
I didn't even read that.
Dalton Moore, Jackson Tweedy, Karina Strayer, William Ben Vels, Connor Abrams, Cooper Donner, High School Alice, Holgarth, Aniston Merritt, Michael Ballinger, Emma Wagner.
Congratulations. I think the Walden list, I think.
He got the right one.
You read the correct one, I did. All right. Congratulations, students of the month. Uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Look for a motion on the entirety. Anything needs pulled separately.
Make a motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? opposed? Motion carries. Uh, curriculum and instruction report.
Thank you. So I'm actually gonna change the title of this report next month, because I think I'm gonna call it the superintendent's report, just to give more of a broad perspective. I realize that after doing this for a while, it's not always related directly to curriculum instruction. So just a few updates for the board tonight. Um, construction, um, on the discovery centers and the add buildings continues to go as planned. Um, we'll have ownership of both of those buildings in June and then putting furniture in them and they'll be ready to go for next school year. Probably, we haven't set a date yet, but probably that second week of August, um, sometime right after school gets started, we're gonna have, um, uh, dedication ceremonies and open houses at both campuses. So we're looking forward to that. And that'll be a great way to welcome everybody back for the new school year. Um, as the board is aware, we are in the process of searching for a new principal for Morristown Elementary School. Um, we are going to be interviewing candidates very soon. And we're gonna schedule a special board meeting on May twenty-eighth to approve, um, our recommendation for that. So very much looking forward to that. Um, I read three, just to update the board. As you know, this is the first year where we're mandating retention for third graders. We will have a handful of students, final numbers haven't been determined yet, um, from both Morristown and Walden that are gonna be notified and required to attend mandatory summer school. We are gonna pro, provide transportation if needed for those kids to come into summer school. It's also offered, we're also offering summer school to any second grader who scored in an at-risk category on the I read three test, so that maybe they can get ahead. They, all students who are participating in the summer session will take the test again at the end of June. Um, and if they pass, then they, uh, third graders get to move on to third grade. Um, and if they're in second grade, then they don't have to retake it the following year, so they're done. Um, quick legislative recap, um, the board has been tracking some of the legislative items, um, that have been passed. We're gonna be planning and meeting to discuss how Senate Bill One and the property tax cuts are gonna impact our finances, not just in twenty-twenty-six, but and beyond. And so we're gonna have a, a work session coming up to discuss that on May twenty-eighth as well. Um, so that'll be a lot of decisions that we have to make and trying to plan ahead for how those are gonna impact us long term. We also, um, know now what our budget is, so we know what percentage our education fund will increase. We also know that we have to take on the curriculum materials cost going forward. Um, and that there has been some change to that legislation that now allows us to charge fees to parents for certain things again. That's something that I will probably be bringing back to the board with a recommendation on some new fees, um, probably for device rental. Um, and then we're also now permitted to charge parents for textbook rental related to dual credit classes. So probably those two for sure and, um, maybe a couple other additionals we'll look at. It'll still be less than what parents used to pay before the state took it over, but there will be a few things. Um, the last one that impacts the board is, uh, the partisan school board elections. Um, I know that's something the board watched closely this last legislative session and come twenty-twenty-six, is that the next election year? Um, those that are running will have to declare a party, um, Republican, Democrat, or Independent, or choose not to, what's, what's called Andrew? Choose not to declare. I think you have an option where you cannot declare, um, as, as part of that, um.
So what's the point in making people?
So yes, you can. So I had a very long, very detailed, interesting conversation with the author of this bill about it, um, that I probably shouldn't go into in a public session. But the interesting thing about it is that would count. But it really depends on the makeup of your county. So you could choose not to declare. But if your county tends to vote R the way Shelby County does and somebody's running against you and they put an R next to their name, then I think the likelihood would be that you would, you would lose. I think that's what they, that's what the intent of the bill was. So I think the intent of the, the author's intent was to get people to declare, but they didn't, they conceded to include an option where you don't have to declare.
So if you have to not declare by rule of your job, is that publicized so that it doesn't hurt you when it comes to the vote?
So it's a great question, and I've already been exploring that for Andrew because.
Well, it would be the same thing, because of FEMA.
Oh, that's right. So the way I understand it is if everybody that is running didn't declare, it would not be a partisan election. But if one person declares their political affiliation, then it would be a partisan election and that would, Hatch Act would apply and you, you and Andrew would be in jeopardy. That's the way I understand it. That's the interpretation I got from legal counsel as of today. It's great for our military. Yeah. There's lots of opinions out there. I tend to believe probably not the, the greatest decision, but. Okay, give me just a second, because for some reason my notes just went away.
Something like the church and state ruling schools.
Yeah, it, yeah. So last, two more items. So I've completed three of four end of year building meetings. One of the traditions we have is I like to go to each building at the end of the year and sit down with our staff to kind of recap the year. Um, so we talked about some of the ongoing things that we've been working on, some of the construction projects, some of the changes that are gonna have. We did recap a little bit of the legislative and talked about some of the financial outlook for the next couple of years, which I'm being fairly transparent and just saying it's not real optimistic, um, as it has been the last two bienniums. Um, so I'm sharing that information, but also reemphasizing our, um, core values and our new district goals that we adopted earlier this year. Um, and then lastly, we will be having our annual end of year, uh, breakfast celebration. We recognize staff for years of service. We recognize retirees. And then just do a kind of a general, uh, year-end, um, celebration. That is on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh at eight AM, and you all are invited if you would like to attend. So. That's it for superintendent's report.
Thank you. Uh, Jessica Collier is with the seniors at King's Island and she emailed us yesterday and provided the update, so she won't have a report today, so we're gonna move on to Blue River Career Center.
All right, a couple things to note with Blue River. Monthly meeting yesterday. I don't think I had mentioned previously that the assistant director, Dusty Neal, had submitted a resignation. He's got a great teaching opportunity in his hometown where his kids go to school. Uh, so he'll be leaving at the end of this contract year. So they went on a search and hired, uh, Colin McCart, actually to, uh, replace him as the assistant director. So we'll start this, in July. And then the other thing to note. Two hundred fifty-five students out of the three forty-two four passed at least one certification in their program. And that's an average of eighty-one percent of their students uh, pass at least one certification. Those certifications are great. Career, whether straight into a career or uh, going on to get an associate's or a bachelor's or whatever, other certifications. Share that. Positive news.
All right, thank you.
Uh, we'll move on to public comments. Is there anyone from the public with a comment? Or in, anything?
Too busy taking notes.
He loves your job.
Uh, all right, we'll move on to new business. First up, we're gonna consider the waterline replacement at the Morristown High School.
Yes. Yes. So y'all know that we've repaired the waterline, current waterline twice now. Uh, in fact, we haven't even repaired the pavement yet. In front of Morristown Elementary, from last time it broke. Um. It's broke three times in three years. You know, it's, the town's pretty sure that after doing some research, it's forty to fifty years old.
So would they have installed it or would we have in the school corporation?
It's our line, so I don't know. I don't know if it was put in when they expanded the junior high wing in the seventies. I don't know. So.
With that being said, Jeff, I would like us to, um, petition the TIF board to pay for that line.
I'll do that.
I'll take care of that. I'll take care of that piece.
Um. It so.
It fits infrastructure.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm not disagreeing, but I just wouldn't know how to do that, so. So I had three companies take a look at it, uh, textbook trenching, um, Sullivan and Poor, which is, used to be Mark Rains. And then, uh, Shooty Escavating. And after talking with all three of them, meeting out there and going over what I was kind of wanting to do with it, um, Andy gave me the most comfortable meeting and how he was gonna approach it and what the options were. Uh, very detailed, um, where I didn't really get that from the other two. I think Shooty's quite high and I think Sullivan and Poor's a little low. I think Andy's probably pretty much spot on. However, um, and he's looking into it, he contacted his supplier and they are already applying tariffs to it, so he's trying to get quotes and I thought maybe it was gonna go down because of some testing and tapping fees that he calculated may not happen. But that may not be the case now. It may go up just because of materials or having tariff supply chain. My vote is for textbook trenching to put the water link.
No, they replaced, they're the ones that did it for us last time when it was emergency and took care of it.
The town fixed it the very first time. But Andy's fixed it the last two times.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's the most terrorist, I've seen him fall off on some materials here in the last, this.
The supplier's checking, but Andy hadn't heard back from him last time I talked to him a couple of days ago.
I don't know about that stuff. I don't buy that stuff, but I've seen some fall off. Well, you're the guy in charge of it, Jeff. I make a motion that would go with your recommendation.
I will second that motion. Any discussion? This is summer work, correct? Because water's gonna be shut down.
So Andy's plan is to get the tap done and then slowly, without trying to leave any trenches open, you know, his way, all the way up to where the, everything meets at the fire pit and the fire hydrants and where it goes into school. So we're hoping no more than two days we'll be without water to school. So we can chlorinate, uh, chlorinate the water, dechlorinate the water, clean out the lines and do all the testing and everything, so. The actual hookup won't take very long, but then we got all the other projects to go through, so. Now, Mr. Short is aware, we're gonna try to do that early, mid-July. But he can do everything else up to that point, because summer school will be over pretty much all the activities in the building will be over for the high school as anyway.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so the next, and you guys can, I broke this up because, um, they're not exactly the same quotes, although they're by the same company, different quantities and that stuff. Um, we've been talking about replacing furniture for a couple of years now, so we've decided we wanna work on the junior high wings next. So as the kids come out of elementary school, they go into junior high, they're seeing very similar type of furniture that they're used to having in the elementaries now. So after working with three different companies, um, in order to stay pretty consistent with what we currently have in the elementaries, so we don't have any hard feelings that we went with this for the high school or that. Something different, uh, I'm recommending Lee Company to replace for both junior high wings.
Who did the elementary? Was it Lee Company?
It was a combination of Lee Company and Educational Furniture, but for some reason Educational Furniture didn't wanna go with Smith Systems this time. They wanted to do
Han?
No, Han was, uh, Kenwood.
The other people we met with?
Uh, he went with, uh, WB. I don't remember what it's, it's another company, so. One of the things I didn't like about that furniture.
And that's an estimate too. They didn't have an exact, obviously, there was different furniture, different quality.
I had to add from this one and take away from that one, and there was something else on another quote, and I'm not sure if the numbers were.
No, I like, I like that. So you recommend Lee Company?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we go with Lee Company.
I will second.
I was about to ask, is this for Morristown and Walden, both combined, did you?
Yes. Yes. Well, I think we should use educational furniture, Walden Company and Morristown, to see what happens. Hey, how about we put yellow chairs at Walden and blue at Morristown? No, my motion's for both the same, yeah.
Sounds good. Uh, any further discussion about the furniture? All in favor? Both? Motion carries. That is all we have for new business, uh, we have an after twelve agenda. You know, that. Was the consent? The consent? Yeah. Where it is, what's the after twelve, just the consent agenda?
Well, it's a consent agenda.
Yeah, there was a, oh, it is, I may have voted on the wrong consent agenda in the beginning.
There it is.
So you have, um, two recommendations? And what was the original?
Um, the original consent agenda. Just the ordinary stuff.
Arrow meeting minutes.
Okay, alright, yeah. So on the after twelve.
So you must, what you probably did is you went straight into the.
Exactly what I did, yeah. Uh, in the after twelve, the first item is to consider the MHS gym facility use agreement.
Yes, and that was for, I believe, um, a series of basketball, uh, rentals, uh, by former students, um, throughout the summer, like on Sunday nights, I believe.
Yeah, recreational.
Recreation basketball, yes. It's the same group that we've rented, that we've done this agreement with in the past.
Yeah. Was there a time term on that?
I think it's just for the summer.
They put a credit card machine on the lights, they just come in and swipe it, lights come on for so long and then. Chris likes that idea.
I used to run that, I made people donate before, to come.
We used to do that.
You did, the old church league. Like the car, car wash, it starts beeping, you got sixty seconds left.
Uh, I move, we approve the facility use agreement for the gym at Morristown.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next, we have three personnel recommendations, um, I'll let you go over those if you don't mind.
Yeah, um, and of course, I just X'd them out right before you saw that. So we have, uh, it's the beauty of technology, um, resignation from Brittany Fleming, so she's, um, MES instructional aide and is getting ready to have a baby, and so she's resigning, cause she's not planning to do that role next school year. Um, Amy Tush is, is not a resignation, but it's a change in work schedule for next school year. And then Melissa Branson as the SES Virtual Learning Academy Student Support Specialist.
I move, we approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I believe that's all we have on the agenda.
Correct.
Any comments from the superintendent?
Nope, thank you all for a great meeting and, uh, as I met with the Walden staff this afternoon, I don't think they're counting, but there was only seven days, there's only seven days left of school left for the kids. Um, so, uh, it'll be over before we know it and we'll be back here in, in, in July, uh, we're gonna meet at Morristown and Walden, haven't decided yet to do a tour of, um, the discovery center and the ag buildings, cause they'll be all wrapped up by then. So looking very much forward to that.
Mr. Shores, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit, you were talking about the freshman class earlier.
Yeah.
I was told the other day that I think it's the English class, one of the online platforms that they use, they're rated in the top five percent in the world.
Andy, yep, yep, that's, uh, so, yes, I've seen that stat, um, and they have, um, it's based on, there are the numbers, it's hundreds of classrooms, um, and they are giving the most progress, I believe, just how it's measured and, and timed on task. And kind of a whole lot better, they are, um, doing very well. Uh, Mr. Myers class, that, so that's Miss, um, David, you talked about, Mr. Myers class also used to be in their classrooms, and they were like top ten percent, so they're also good.
That's awesome.
I'd rather be random, top ten percent smartest kids in the world.
Another thing to put on spotlight, you share with the board and the public what you told me about your Washington DC trip as far as how our students behave compared to other schools.
Yeah, um, there were times that I was seeing the other, you know, just random districts that we've run into that were around. I could hear a lot of image that, uh, I didn't hear from Harvard, um, I heard a lot of, um, just inappropriate, it's all on the craziness that, um, Harvard did not. So that's Walden and Morristown that were very, very respectful in place, respectful and just crazy as well.
Sounds like a page news article.
Yeah. That's a credit to good leadership, because a couple of the parents had told me also about situations where you didn't have to say a lot, but you know, if a kid was starting to be a kid, you just went to them and told them to stop and.
Yeah, yeah, so I appreciated you sharing that, though, I, but that's important. Sure.
It's good to know that we can trust them in DC when the people in this swamp can't even behave.
Our kids can. Oh, sorry. Anybody else? Yeah, it's true.